Chair calls the October 3 Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order.
You're not doing too much, too long waiting for it.
There's no objection, we're gonna add one item to recognition tonight. If you go down to item four and put school accountability recognition, it's gonna be done. No objection to that, okay. I'd like to welcome all over here tonight, and I think we're in for a real treat here, if you wondered about this funny-looking stuff up front. But glad to have all of you here tonight, and I would like to recognize Mr. Ryan McIntyre for our invocation and the pledge. Thank you.
Just bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you tonight, asking for your wisdom and guidance. As we attempt to move our county schools forward, we come with heavy hearts and with the tragedy that has occurred out in Las Vegas, Lord, and we ask for peace and comfort for all the victims' families and those who are hurt. And while we know that only these acts can, are just brought to us by hate and through the sin that we have allowed to corrupt into our lives and our society, we acknowledge that that sin can be cleansed by the blood of your Son, Jesus, that died on the cross for us. So we thank you for that, and we just ask that through your strength, we move forward as a nation and as a county, and thank you for all you do, in your holy name. Amen.
First item for us to deal with on the agenda is a request to address the board by, I'm gonna prop him to mess his name up, Tomasia, is that the way you pronounce that?
Tamisha.
Mesia?
Tamisha.
Okay. I'll let you introduce yourself, Courtney. If you would come ahead to the podium and start your presentation, please.
Good evening. It's myself, Tamisha Courtney, I'm the Director of Impact Mentoring, and Maria Dove Thaggard is the Assistant Director of Impact Mentoring. Alrighty. So Impact Mentoring is a program that we started last year, and I'm gonna just step back a little bit. It's a program that we started last year, and the mission for the program is to impact the lives of the youth in our community by offering support to help them become successful with achieving their life goals. Some of the services that our program offers is peer-to-peer tutoring, mentoring in the community, Lunch Pals, and workshops to teach daily living skills. When we go a little in-depth with each of these, the peer-to-peer tutoring is for our youth and elementary-age students. The mentoring in the community is more so focused on our middle school and our high school-age students. And then our Lunch Pals, again, that's more elementary-age-based. And the workshops to teach daily living skills, those are gonna be held in the community, and it will be addressed with the youth that are in the middle school and high school. We will be addressing different topics such as suicide and depression, teaching them sexual education, daily living skills such as proper hygiene, and just really learning about different healthy boundaries and things to that nature. We plan to do these workshops quarterly within the community with the youth. Some data for Stanley County Schools. East Albemarle and Albemarle High School had the district's lowest performance score of forty-nine, with neither meeting growth expectations. The middle school, however, improved to a C while also exceeding its growth benchmark. The system repeated four grades of D, three of them are inner-city schools.
Okay, we're looking here at some of the data, and we see that Stanley Early College had a grade of A. And we want to see every school in Stanley County receive that same grade, because we know that it's possible, because Stanley County Schools is a great school district, and we have great students, we have great teachers. So we want to be a solution, or a part of a solution, to a bigger problem. One of the things that we looked at was, we looked at the cost of retention. And it's far more than monetary. It's true that an additional year of school costs thousands of taxpayer dollars. And we know that in this time of budget cuts, we really can't afford to pay thousands of dollars for every student who's retained. There is an increase in the likelihood that a student will drop out of school. Research has shown that a student who drops, who is retained will be five times more likely to drop out of school than a student who is not retained. And we don't like those statistics, because we know that when it comes down to it, if they are not getting an education, then, you know, that increases the likelihood of crime and that type of thing, and that's not something that we want for our county or for our students. Also, continued low school performance. If they are retained in elementary school, then that could cause them to have a negative outlook on school in general, and down the line, it could lead to low school performance and an overall general dislike for school. So these are some of the things that we want to try to help stop, or put a, you know, just put a, help to alleviate some of the issues. What are some of the alternatives for retention? Research has shown, and there have been suggestions, that after-school support that is being, that is offered helps with the retention rates, because if you tap into the community resources that are available, you tap into the volunteers that are in your community, then you can easily implement something after school. We are something that you can, Impact Mentoring and the tutoring program that we are trying to have for students in elementary school is just one of the community resources that we can use in order to try to curb the retention rates. Early intervention, if we can identify early in the school year students who have the potential to do better than what they have been doing, and we can get those, them into those tutoring services, then it will help us to be able to, to kind of put a block there before it gets started. Literacy emphasis, students who are read too often in early have a better chance of doing well in school than students who are not. So some of the things that we want to possibly do is give out books in the community through book drives and that type of thing, because we need to get books in the hands of our students at an early age, so that we can help them ignite that love of reading, so that we can have some positive results. Now, how can we help to resolve this problem? We're, well, we're one agency, and we probably can't resolve the problem, however, we can help to, to help make, come up with a solution to the problem. Some of the benefits, benefits of Impact Mentoring. We want to improve EOG scores overall for every school in the county. We want to make a difference in the benchmarks for our students. We want to build confidence where they feel comfortable in the school setting, where they have a positive self-esteem, because they are not failing all the time, or feeling like they are failing all the time. We want to increase community involvement, we want our community to come in, because the students who are in our community, they're our future. And so we want them, we want the community to come in, and as a community rally to make a difference, because that's the, that's the biggest part of the solution to the problem, is the community coming in and rallying around. And we want to offer peer-to-peer support. Peer tutoring is academically effective, and it costs significantly less than, than some private programs or tutoring programs that you have. We have brilliant students in the community. We have students in the community who need community service hours, who will be willing to come in and tutor elementary-age students. And research has shown that peer-to-peer tutoring benefits the tutors as well as the students who are being tutored. Another thing that we want to offer is a mentoring program for our middle school and high school students. One finding suggested that students who are mentored were more confident in their performance in their schoolwork, and are fifty-two percent less likely to skip school. And these are good, this is good news, because we hear so often that you can't reach the kids, or you don't know what works with them. A lot of times, all it takes is just having that supportive support system, and just to know that someone out there actually really cares about me, to make a huge impact in a student's life. In order to provide all students with opportunities to develop skills such as resilience, determination, and perseverance, many schools implement mentoring programs which provide meaningful opportunities to help students develop into responsible adults. At Albemarle Middle School, where I'm an eighth-grade math teacher, we have implemented a girls mentoring program called GEMS, which stands for Girls Empowerment and Motivation Sisterhood. We started it last year, we're going into our second year, and it is amazing the things that we see with these girls. When we first started last year, we had girls who, if you told them that you loved them, they didn't know how to take it, because, I don't know if it's because they, you know, did not feel it, or whatever, but by the end of the school year, they were always saying how much they loved us, and just, you know, they would come in and they would be reluctant to talk, they would be reluctant to, to really put themselves out there, but by the end, they were talking about how much they loved you, they were, because they saw that the people and the teachers who were in the program, who were mentoring them, loved them, and they cared about their well-being. There are times when the students are having a bad day, and the administration can get a mentor, and the mentor can come in, diffuse the situation, and make the, just make things better, because that's a safe haven for the students. Someone who they know is safe, and that they're able to be themselves, and who actually cares about them. Mentoring makes a huge difference, and that's one of the biggest things that we want to offer to the community, is the mentoring service. And we have mentors lined up who are willing, and who are ready, and who are anxious to start working with these students. It's so important to have positive role models for these students to be able to see.
So peer-to-peer tutoring facts. Research says that students at all grade levels that participate in tutoring programs improve their reading performance. This not only impacts both the tutor and the student in positive areas of learning towards subject matter and self-concept. When children teach children, the result is marked improvement in student learning, which increases the productivity of school. And then peer tutoring is the most cost-effective way to both math and reading performance. Last year, we were able to work within the Stanley County Public Library with this program, and we had middle school students from Albemarle Middle School, they were AIG students, young ladies, and to see these young ladies take it upon themselves to find the curriculum that met each child's needs was very impressive. I always had things in place for them, for the students that were receiving mentoring, but these young ladies came on their own, and on their own free time, they had took it upon themselves to do the research on their own, and they knew what each student needed. They were each assigned to a particular student, and they did very well. The kids loved it. I remember there was one day we had to cancel, and we had these students, they were quite upset that they wouldn't get tutoring that week, because there was an issue where we had to reschedule. But it was very impressive and very heartwarming to be able to see the students that dedicated to the program. Benefits to the students. It improves their self-confidence, improves self-esteem as they become more successful students, improves academic achievement, improves attitudes towards the subject matter, encourages greater persistence in completing tasks and courses, encourages the use of appropriate and efficient learning, provides an opportunity for individualized instruction. Research shows that when students have peer-to-peer tutoring, they're more comfortable with asking questions if it's just one-on-one, whereas in a classroom setting, they may feel a little more uncomfortable asking around other students. And so it's more of a kind of laid-back atmosphere with the peer-to-peer tutoring. And then the benefit to the mentors, which are our youth tutors, it encourages higher level of thinking, improves general knowledge, develops confidence and learning ability, improves motivation for studying, builds self-esteem, and creates a sense of pride in helping others, develops communication skills, provides experiences that may help with later employment or career goals, develops empathy for others, improves attitudes towards subject area, and develops a sense of responsibility. Like Maria mentioned earlier, we will be having early college students, some middle school students, and possibly some high school students that will be assisting with providing that peer-to-peer tutoring. And a benefit to them is that they earn their community service hours for the under-society students and for the students that are in the early college program at Stanley Community College. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for your presentation. Any of the board members have any questions or comments? You're, I don't, I don't know exactly your purpose in coming, other than to make the public aware of this.
Yes.
You're not necessarily asking the
Yes, sir.
school system to be involved necessarily in it. And you've been doing this outside the school system, I'm assuming.
We have been, we have been doing it outside of the school system, however, we would like to bring it into the school system and do it after school, immediately after school. We've met with East Albemarle and with Central Elementary, and that is something that we're kind of in the process of getting in place, so that once school lets out, those students that they refer to us for tutoring can get it, so that way transportation wouldn't be an issue for those students who truly need the services.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, I applaud you for what you are doing. I think anything that we can do that shows our students that we care, and that we will go beyond, or we will do whatever it takes to, to help them to be successful in school, in life. And I see that this is what this program's doing. It reminds me a lot kind of of a boy and girls club somewhat. There's a couple questions that I wonder about. First of all, are all the teachers, like at Albemarle Middle, are they all a part of this program?
At Albemarle Middle, with the mentoring program that we have in place, the teachers refer girls who they feel would benefit from the mentoring. There are teachers there who are mentors, and we meet twice a month at school during our pride period, where we meet with the girls, and we have about forty-five minutes to, you know, just talk about different things. We have different things that go on every, every meeting, so it's just a time for them to just let their hair down, and for us to get to know them, and just to develop that relationship between that caring adult and that student.
Right. What about people that are in the community that are a part of this? How are they chosen, and?
We, a lot of the mentors that we have, they, we know them from church, and we also have been working with Terry Scott to get those people who are going to be mentors in the community with our students, to get background checks done with, for them, and that type of thing. So we're taking all necessary steps to make sure that our students would be safe.
Right, that was kind of my next question, a little bit with background check.
Yeah.
We also had, initially when we met with the schools and talked with the different principals, they actually recommended some individuals to us that were currently already involved with the school who may like to be a part of the program, and so we reached out to those individuals as well, and that's kind of how we came about the group of people that we would like to start out with.
Right. You know, sometimes I think there's more people out there that would love to be a part of something like this if they just knew who to contact and how to go about it. Like you're, when the peers work with the peers, is that during the school day? Is that like after school as well?
That is after school. Right now, ideally, what we would like it to be is as soon as school gets out, they get a snack, and then we're able to go into the peer-to-peer tutoring. And we're basing it off of the availability. We want to have timeframes for the middle school, I'm sorry, timeframes for East Albemarle and timeframes for Central on certain days. And we're dedicated to that school on those days, and those students from the early college program, or from the high school or middle school, will pick the days and times that work for them.
What are you, what are you needing from us as a board?
We are just here today to let the community know that the resources are available, so that if there are people in our, in the community who are interested in helping to mentor, who are interested in, you know, coming and just, once a month, super, helping us to supervise during the tutoring, just, you know, community involvement is so important, and that's the cornerstone and the backbone of any organization that wants to really be successful and pull the community in. So we're just here to get it on record that this is something that is out there, and to hopefully the word will get out in the community that we're here.
This pamphlet that we have up here, are you able to distribute these to each principal and the counselors and everyone else involved, you know, kind of in the school?
Yes, we have extras here today.
Okay, I mean, I would, I would love to see you be able to make sure that every school, you know, is, is able to see this, and be a part of church groups, you know, any civic organization, the YMCA, you know, any, anything. I applaud you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for caring. The school system can do a good job and do all it can do, but sometimes we need to assist it from outside, too, so commend you for what you're doing. I recognize Ms. Harvey to recognize our show-and-tell for tonight.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Sorenson from South Stanley High School for the South Stanley High School Robotics.
Thank you. Ms. Criscott's supposed to give this first speech, and she bummed it off on me, so. Alright, we are actually living on the cusp of a technological revolution. The evolution of robotics in today's manufacturing and service sector is moving faster and faster and promises to change the foundations of economies worldwide. Rather than be intimidated by the rise of the robots, Stanley County Schools sought to be on the forefront of that revolution, and introduced a mobile robotics program at South Stanley two years ago. This STEM program has students build robots from raw hardware, design drive trains, create programs, and compete in various challenges such as fastest robot, most powerful robot, inclined driving, and parallel parking. And we're gonna demonstrate that here in just a little bit. The students learn the physics of mechanics, a great deal of electronic communications theory, basic C++ programming, and the math of the machines. This course culminates in students preparing their robots to move and stack objects utilizing sensors in an autonomous program of their own design. Thanks to a grant from PD Electric and the North Carolina Electric Co-ops, South students also work with humanoid robots as well. The humanoid robots can tell stories, do push-ups, dance, sing, and compete in sporting events. The robotic, robotics program performed demonstrations of the humanoids at Aquadale and Norwood Elementary, exposing our youngest students to the cutting-edge technology that they will grow up with. So now I'll pull some of these kids up here to help me demonstrate. We'll start out with the mobile robots, the VEX robots, and running default code, I've got technicians Jacob and Heath, you'll come up and demonstrate your robots. While they're turning them on, the parallel parking competition is what we're actually doing at school right now. They're running in one of the three modes these robots will run in. It'll run in a tethered mode, which means wired straight to a controller. It'll run an 802.11G Wi-Fi interface, which is what they're doing, and then it'll run autonomously, and we'll demonstrate the third option here in a few minutes. And you might notice the designs are different. The curriculum has us come up with canned, oh, not have a canned design. In the interest of my kids who go a little bit beyond, above and beyond that, we just let them, we let them build wherever they want to. When it comes to the labs, though, and the math doesn't work out, they have to figure out why the math doesn't work out. So if the wheelbase is four inches as opposed to three and a half inches, their gear chain numbers will all come out different, so you gotta go ahead and run them if you got them running. Yeah, that happens sometimes, too. Alright, fellas, you can park those. And actually, pull them up right, pull them up right here to the side here. I'm gonna have our technician Levi Carpenter Blake McClellan demonstrate the robots running autonomously, which basically means it runs completely on a program that they designed and downloaded the robot. You may have noticed, may have noticed right before we started, we couldn't log into our server here, so Mandy took the next door, let them log in, logged into the program. And this is the culmination of the big thing they really want to do, is get to the point where they can write the code, and it's C++ code, to make the robots do what they do. And Levi's gonna demonstrate, Levi and Blake are gonna, Blake demonstrate their robot doing the parallel park function, and we're not to the point in the correct where they're using sensors, so this is totally done with the math. They measured the distances, they calculate the distance that each rotation of the motors does, or results in, and then they come up with this. And we're doing it on the, on the plywood, because the physics of friction is different from carpet to the hard floor at our school, so it would totally, be totally different on the carpet. Hopefully it's gonna work.
Can I undersee? I'll put down the remote, so you see I'm not even controlling it. If it'll connect.
I think you're gonna get hit, man. This, this program they wrote, we actually tested it at the school today, it worked fine there, so we'll just have to see what happens with it. That's fine. And you may not realize it, but you just witnessed one of my kids troubleshooting the problem, my Adobe, it's the battery. Well, setting that up, the last competition we had was a rate turn competition, where the robot started out in a spot on the floor, and had to make four turns left or right, and the winner was decided who came closest, where they started, and had perfect ninety-degree turns. On our slippery floor there at the shop, it's pretty impressive the way the kids came through. All the groups got done with that, except for one last week, and then they, those guys got theirs run today. We need a drum roll or something here, I'll give you that. I think it's in your program. We'll move along, well, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Alright, I'm gonna have a couple kids show you the humanoid robots. Justin's gonna come demonstrate the MechaNoide, which was a kit that came to us last year, and it actually came in a box, it was thousand fourteen discrete parts, and Levi and one other student put it together over the course of about seven and a half hours. Now, the MechaNoide actually has several ways it can be programmed. It has what is called LIM, you can put a cellphone in front of it, push a button, it'll mimic whatever you do. You can have it recorded. You can have it record motions, or you can manually program it, which is what they've done here. And he, he'll tell stories, he'll tell jokes, those kind of things too, it's all programmable. For Skills USA, last year we had him do the Skills USA pledge in Greensboro, he did that. Yeah, he's, well. All right, I've only got one more robot to show you, that's the Alpha One S. And Madison Woods is going to come show you that. We'll let Levi take the Mac, I mean, Justin take the Mac back off the track there. Now, the Alpha One S, this is actually our oldest humanoid, it's still in operation, he's two years old. And he can do a lot of things too, so go ahead and demonstrate what we can do with him, Eddie. So he can obviously do a push-up. We had him telling stories for the elementary kids, you can, you can have record as you, as you program motions. And we had him telling stories with the elementary kids. He also does a little dance routine, so as soon as she finds it on the connection. Now, he can be programmed one of two ways, via the handheld or via a computer and a USB cable. If you can imagine the elementary kids getting down doing push-ups with the robots, they thought that was just the biggest thing in the world. Thank you. These are, I appreciate my kids coming out too.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson, appreciate that. Students, just make a brief commentary. I recently got to tour through a plant in Moline, Illinois, where they make the planer, big planters they pull behind tractors. And it was amazing, the, the way they had the whole thing, the whole plant was computerized basically. There's still a little bit of labor, physical stuff to do, but basically everything is so computerized, it's just mind-boggling. And it's, it's not like working in the cotton mill anymore, that's for sure. Thank you very much. Ms. Harvey, you have some more recognition?
Yes, this time I'd like to recognize Danny Poplin.
If I could, I'd like to ask Stanley Early College High School representatives if they would step to the front, please. We'd like to take the time and just recognize two schools. We have several, and we could talk a lot tonight about all the good things that are happening. But we would like to recognize two schools tonight. One is Stanley Early College High School for basically, as said earlier, making an A on the report card. This is three out of four years. I would be amiss if I did not mention, of course, all the kids that go through there and the hard work that they do, especially, of course, the teachers, the staff, Ms. Falconberry, who's not here but who were, was there last year. And I would like just, again, thank you personally, and of course, would like to also present you with something to hang in that school. We have a banner, of course, in the colors, and also of the mascot, the Stanley Early College High School, school performance grade A, two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. We're very proud and we thank you all for what you do for our kids each and every one. And of course, we just want to mention Mr. Adams, Ms. Honeycutt, administration here. Thank you all again for all that you do, and of course, everyone, thank you. And most of these had my daughter, so I'm very complimentary. I think we played a mean game of volleyball too.
Yes, we did.
So, thank you, sir. We'd also like to recognize West Stanley Middle School. If I could ask those representatives to come up to the front, please. Again, we have a lot, a lot of positives to talk about, but again, we just had mentioned two to recognize tonight. West Stanley Middle School is one of five that it stated growth for Stanley County Schools this year. Mr. Howley's going to come in a few moments and give you all sorts of data. You will be filled with data here in a little while, so I'm just going to keep mine brief. We, West Stanley Middle School was one of five schools in Stanley County to earn a B this year. One factor is when we talk about school performance grade, SPG, it's made of different factors, but one is growth, it's about moving from year to year. West Stanley Middle School, if you look at growth, finished with a positive twelve-point-three-one growth index. That was the twelfth highest growth index in the state of North Carolina, charter schools and public schools. They were the second highest middle school in the state of North Carolina, and we're talking about approximately over twenty-five-hundred schools. So we definitely want to thank you for your hard work, and this is Jennifer Honeycutt, of course, Mandy Effer, if you'll come, and the rest of the representatives will unveil this. I would like to move over and to continue with recognition. I would like to ask Bill Sorenson to come up again, please. Mr. Sorenson's been with us twenty-six years teaching electronics and robots at South Stanley High School. He's also, as I think was mentioned earlier, that he is the sponsor, the coach of the Skills USA team, and he has a presentation that he would like to make.
At South Stanley, I am blessed to work with a lot of amazing students with the ma, exceptional talents and dedication. Tonight I would like to recognize one such student that has risen above and beyond the crowd. He has a perfect four-point-oh GPA throughout his entire high school career. This stellar young man is my Skills USA chapter president and THS vice president, and quite possibly the most technically proficient student I've ever had the privilege of teaching. He has earned every ETA certification available, won first place at every level of the Stanley College Electronics Contest that he has competed in, and he medaled in the state Skills USA Electronics Contest as an Electronics One student. He was also the only electronics three student out of the seventy-two in the state last year to score mastery on the exam, which was an eighty-five score wrong. He's not only excels in programming the VEX robots, but has also designed and developed several Hardinio projects, writing his own code in C++ languaging, I mean, language. He has personally made several repairs to Stanley County Schools' technology equipment, saving the district hundreds of dollars in replacement costs. And frankly, he has affected repairs that I personally couldn't pull off. Finally, he was just recently appointed to be the regional leadership position of the Skills USA CTSO. Allow me to introduce to you this year's Skills USA Southwest Regional President, Levi Carpenter.
This time I would like to recognize Lee Hayes, executive director of the Exceptional Children's Program. Ms. Hayes.
Mr. Poole, Board of Education members, Mistress Harvey, Mistress Hatley, Mr. Poplin, and guests. I would like to introduce to you tonight a special educator who not only holds a master's degree from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, has thirty-plus years of service in education, and is a National Board certified teacher. She is Ms. Karen Mann from West Stanley Middle School. Karen, I want you to come down here, but I want to keep talking about you. We in the EC department have been impressed with Karen, her work ethic, her generosity. This young lady uses a lot of her own money, a lot of her own money, to improve the educational program for her students. She has a genuine love, care, and concern for her students in her classroom, and she has the ability to reach these students, pushing them to reach, reach their fullest potential. In her classroom, the words "I cannot" are not acceptable. She is a true advocate of the students in the Exceptional Children's Program, they are her life's work and her passion. I am proud and honored to present the two thousand seventeen Exceptional Children Educator of Excellence Award to Ms. Karen Mann. Stanley County Schools is very fortunate to have her. Thank you for all you do. Thank you so much for all you do. We'd like to really thank her for everything she does day in and day out. She is phenomenal, and if you get a chance, go see her. She's doing her job. Members of the Board of Education attended a recent North Carolina School Board Association meeting, and at that meeting, many of the local educational agencies, Board of Educations were recognized. Stanley County Board of Education was presented for training and excellence and commitment during the two thousand sixteen, seventeen academic year, the North Carolina School Board Association Gold Bell Award, and that was for whole-board training. Congratulations.
Actually, before we get swelled heads, that just means we did what we were supposed to do. But I do commend the board because this does take time out from their private lives or their personal occupations, and they get, the credit hours they get by attending conferences, workshops, et cetera. So it, it takes some commitment from all the board members to achieve that. I'd like to thank all the board for participating. Chair is going to declare about a five-minute recess at this point in time, so the board can interact with some of these folks that's got awards tonight, and the students here from South Stanley, and whatever, but the chair declares a five-minute recess. Thank you. Call meeting back to order. Just like to make one additional comment right quickly. One of our members, Ms. Sherri Vaughn, serves on the North Carolina School Board Association Board, and so she has some additional meetings through the year in addition to meeting all her other requirements. So I'd like to extend my congratulations to her for that. They will be getting to do their thing in Greensboro here next month as they prepare for the state School Board Association meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda, you have copies of the September the fifth regular meeting and also the September twenty-fifth work session. Are there any corrections or deletions, additions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We move to committee reports. Instructional program is Glenda Gibson. Allies, Mr. McIntyre.
No report.
Finance, Ms. Watson.
No report.
Personnel, Ms. Crump.
Yes, we did meet. The personnel committee met September the twenty-fifth at six o'clock, and we discussed several things. One was the reorganization of data managers. Ms. Calvert provided information to the committee concerning the reorganization opportunity that has been discussed for a year with the resignation of Ms. Kelly Farr. And after communicating with principals and the current data managers, Ms. Calvert recommended having two lead positions that will be located at the central office for centralized enrollment, training, and leave-of-absence substitute personnel. So one data manager will be split between Millingport and Indy, and no additional positions will need to be filled. Another order of business was discussion of the Alexander Youth Network. Ms. Troublefield provided a draft MOA agreement between Stanley County Schools and Alexander Youth Network. It included some costs, evaluation process, and transportation that could be involved. Just a little information about this, it sounds like a wonderful program. It was not budgeted for this school year, so we're really going to have to look at that because we don't have a full breakdown of, of what the cost would be because it would require an additional EC teacher to be hired. But it sounds really wonderful. It's a partnership between Stanley County Schools and the Alexander Youth Network that would provide a counselor in the same classroom with a teacher qualified to teach special needs. And these two teachers would work together with students who have particular needs that would need, I would say, very specific counseling. And so it's, it sounds like something we need. The more we have these discussions with one another, we're realizing there is a real gap in mental health issues and not being addressed quite the way we would like for them to within school systems. This is a national issue, and it's a costly issue as well. But I don't want to say there's not a way we can do it, we just have to come together and talk about it. So we're going to keep talking about that, and there'll be more information to come. There was also a request to address the committee. Mr. Poplin discussed some salary information, and we will discuss that further. And then also the superintendent search. So I addressed the need to discuss this in the committee, and how are we going to go about searching for our superintendent? We have our acting superintendent, Ms. Georgia Harvey, who's doing a wonderful job, and, but we do have to advertise this position. So do we want to go about it traditionally and place it on our website, which we do want to go ahead, we said, and move forward with advertising the position in that way? But what other measures do we want to go to? So the North Carolina School Board Association did reach out to us, as well as some other agencies, and the best price is about twenty-five thousand dollars to do that sort of search. So it was pretty surprising for us to see that. A lot of that we can do in-house, a whole lot of that we can do in-house. So we're going to be discussing that too in closed session as well. We did move into closed session to discuss some personnel matters, and that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. Obviously, Mr. McIntyre.
No report at this time.
And you will be having a meeting fairly soon, I've got some things for you. Legislative Resource Network, Ms. Harvey?
No report.
Wow. Okay, I just mentioned the- Okay, I just mentioned the School Board Association conference that's coming up in November, and who, I think we were identified that we were allowed three voting delegates and one alternate. Is that correct? And we do have four people. Ms. Vaughn, do you get into the delegate assembly by virtue of your being on the Board without? I would think that you probably do. I don't know. Okay. Anyway, we're going to put you down as alternate, because I think you're going to be able to get in anyway on that. And the other, who are the other three? Watson and Ms. Gibson and myself. Okay. Will be the voting delegates. And I don't have a problem. If that doesn't work out where you can get in, I'll be glad to forfeit and let you go in my place. No problem. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And if you need to send that back in, okay, you'll send that back in with that information on it. We appreciate it. Accountability report, Mr. Tim Hatley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for letting me come for you this evening to share with you some of the data highlights out of the 2016-17 school year. I could probably speak for an hour. They told me they give me a limit. They're going to break the hook out, so I'm going to try to cover this quickly, so if you have any questions at any time, please stop and ask. We're going to start off by just looking at 33 of the major or common measures or indicators that the state looks at to measure school systems. Out of these 33 most common measures, Stanley County schools saw increases in over 2/3 of these categories from the 15-16 school year to the 16-17 school year. So that's always a positive when you see increases over a majority of your measures. Now, one thing I will point out throughout my presentation, the state typically uses two measures for proficiency. They use college and career readiness, which is achievement levels four and five, which is typically used for federal measurement, as well as grade level proficiency, which is achievement levels threes, fours, and fives. All of my data this evening will be GLP or grade level proficient numbers, given that is what the state uses, and is also used in our school performance grades. Using those same 33 indicators, Stanley County schools reported scores higher than that of the state average in 13 of those indicators. And especially if you look at the graph on your left, looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade reading, you see some significant numbers there where we were anywhere from almost four and a half percentage points to six and a half percentage points above the state. So a few of our areas to brag on. Since 2013-14, student performance data has been used to assign letter grades and scores to North Carolina public schools as required by the North Carolina General Assembly. These grades are based on each school's achievement score or proficiency scores for 80% of that score and grade, and each of the school's student academic growth, which is 20%. If you look at this, I have provided four years' worth of data. Unfortunately, all of the cells that are highlighted red are the D schools, and if you look at 16-17, we did have four schools that earned a score of D. Albemarle High School, Central Elementary, East Albemarle Elementary, as well as Stanfield Elementary. However, we had 10 schools that earned a score of C, four that earned a B's, those being Albemarle Middle, North Stanley Middle, West Stanley High School, and West Stanley Middle School. And one school has already been recognized this evening, Stanley Early College, which earned their third A out of four years. Now, and overall, this means that 79% of our schools scored a SBG score of C or higher. And I would like also to point out that West Stanley High had, was the second year they had scored a B. And if you look at the bottom, some of the summary totals, we had five schools with As and Bs. That's the most Stanley County schools ever had since the initiation of the SBG. Looking at growth data, in addition to performance, growth is the other accountability measure used by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to gauge schools. Growth is an indication of the rate at which students in the school learned over the past year. The standard is roughly equivalent to a year's worth of growth for a year's worth of instruction. Growth is reported for each school as either exceeded growth expectations, met growth expectations, or did not meet growth expectations. 65% of Stanley County schools either met or exceeded growth for the 2016-17 school year, with five of our schools exceeding growth. I would also like to point out that three out of four of our middle schools exceeded growth and would recognize North Stanley Middle as they have exceeded growth for five consistent years. Now, if you look at this graph, one thing I'd also like to point out, if you go back and look at 12-13 school year, you see lots of reds, lots of schools that did not meet expected growth. And as you shift to the right, coming up to the 16-17 school year, a lot of that red diminishes and is replaced by green and blue, which means that more and more of our schools and our students are either meeting or expected, excuse me, meeting or exceeding the expected growth. So again, good news overall for Stanley County Schools and its students. Now, we're going to jump to some proficiency. As I've already stated, this is GLP, and you'll notice, I used to be a librarian, so I believe in my references. I do have GLP at the top of most of the screens. Also, for those of you with graphs, most of the axis format is in 30-point intervals, just to keep everything consistent. We're going to first look at all EOGs and EOC subjects. That would contain third through eighth grade reading and math, fifth grade science, eighth grade science, as well as Math I, Biology and English II EOC courses. Most of our slides will look at a three-year trend. Over three years, you will notice Stanley County is blue, North Carolina the orangish-redish color. We are unfortunately under the state, but that averages anywhere from just lower over 2 percentages, 2 percentage points, to our deficit of 1.7 percentage points for 16-17. Basically, within a small margin of error, we're railroad-tracking or mirroring the state. So we're within 2 percentage points. Even though we are below, it is not a great demise there. But hopefully, if we continue our trend, if you look at our trend, we gained more 16-17. We gained almost a percent, percentage point and a half, where the state only had 9/10 of percentage points. So if we can duplicate that a couple of years, we will catch and overtake the state. So that's our plan. Looking at just EOG math, grades three through eight, again, you will notice Stanley County is a little bit below the state. For 16-17, the state came in at 55.4% proficient. Stanley County schools at 52.7. However, again, if you look at the rate of increase from 15-16 to 16-17, Stanley County schools' rate of increase was 3.3 percentage points compared to just barely over half of a percentage point by the state. So again, we are making forward strides at a larger rate than the state. Even though we are slightly below them, again, given two or three years of this continued success, we will continue to catch and overtake the state, hopefully. Looking at grades three through eight reading, this has a little good news and bad news. If you look back to 14-15, you will notice that Stanley County was slightly above the state. During the 15-16 school year, we fell slightly below, but for 16-17, we're back above the Again, our rate of increase, much greater than the state's. Anytime that we come in and we have more proficient students than the state, it's always a good sign. Looking at fifth and eighth grade science, again, with mixed results. If you go back over three-year trend, we started out below the state, bested them last year, and this year came in a little bit below. The difference between us and the state was just slightly over 2 and 1/2 percentage points. Here, unfortunately, we did see a decrease in proficiency of almost 4 percentage points. We'll switch gears slightly now and look at all EOC subjects. These North Carolina Math I, English II, and Biology at our high schools. Again, you kind of see that railroad-track effect that there's even intervals throughout the three years. I will admit, though, that interval did increase a little bit for 16-17. The state came in at 60.8% proficient, where Stanley County was 55.8, discrepancy of 5 percentage points. But we did have a slight increase from the previous year, 7/10 of a percentage point. So at least we are showing some gain there. Moving to Biology, basically, we're mirroring the state. If you look at the interval of increase from 15-16 to 16-17, the state increased 6/10 of a percentage point. Stanley County increased 8/10 of a percentage point. Barely anything less than a point, some would argue, was almost null and void, but at least we are making increases, and at least we're mirroring the state. We're not losing ground to them in Biology. EOC, English II. Looking at this for 16-17, again, Stanley County came in slightly below the state at 54.2 percentage points for the county. The state came in at 60.7 percentage, percent proficient. Unfortunately, the gap between the state and the county did increase in this subject area. 2015-16, there was a 5 and 1/2 percentage point difference between the county and the state that grew to 6 and 1/2 percentage points for 16-17. Looking at Math I, again, some mixed results here. We started out in 14-15, two points above the state, excuse me, two points below the state. Last year, we bested the state, and then this year, they've, their rate of increase in proficiency was better than ours, so the state is slightly above us by a little over a percentage point. But there, again, as long as we can stay close and make increases, hopefully that's a good sign, but our goal is always be above the state in every subject area. One area of, I guess, excitement for Stanley County Schools is our graduation rate. The state measures a four-year and a five-year cohort rate. They use the four-year. That's what's used for accountability measure in the SBG, so that's what we're going to talk about this evening. If we go back to 2014-15, if you remember, that was one of Dr. Griffin's bragging points that year, because we were 87.9%, which was significantly above the state. However, last year, we did have a decrease. We fell to 83.2, which was below the state, but had another huge increase this year to 87.8% of our seniors graduating in four years. Now, that's only a tenth off of our all-time high. You know, average those out, it's pretty good. We hope to continue to have at least 88, 89% of our seniors graduating. A point of, again, of bragging rights for us, anytime you see that difference of 4 and 1/2% increase from year to year. ACT Work Keys, this is percent of our ACT, or excuse me, ACT Work Keys concentrators that earn a certificate of silver or higher. We've had a slight increase over these three years here, but actually, if you go back a fourth year, but I want to keep my slides consistent, Stanley County has saw an increase from 2013-14 to the 16-17 year would be almost a 3, excuse me, 23% increase. So we've made huge gains. Unfortunately, a lot of that was made between 13-14 and 14-15, but again, if you look at the blue line, it's consistently increasing, whereas the state kind of flatlined this past year. So hopefully, through our personnel at the Central Office, helping our schools identify those students that take the required courses to become concentrators, we have a plan to help those students practice the skills. It's going to be on the Work Keys assessment, so we're hoping to catch the state and get more and more of these students certified in this field. ACT, National Test, the state dictates that we give it twice a year. A lot of accountability people, and I would argue that there's a lot of factors involved there that's beyond our control. Unfortunately, the state saw a decrease from 15-16 to 16-17 of negative 1.1 percentage points. Unfortunately, the county saw a decrease of 1.4 percentage points. There, again, this is something that we're striving to work on. The state is kind of taking care of this for us. They are adding measures for next school year mandate, some new policies and procedures, so hopefully, we'll see greater interest out of our juniors and hopefully, a greater effort on the ACT. To finish us up this evening, you know, we've looked at Stanley County Schools' data, comparing it to ourselves over the last two years. We've looked at how our data compares to the state. Lastly, we're going to look and see how Stanley County's data compares to those neighboring districts around us. And on this map, I've identified Stanley County in blue, as well as several of the LEAs geographically surrounding us, those being Davidson, Rowan, Cabarrus, Kannapla City, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Union, Anson, Richmond, and Montgomery Counties. As you look at this final table, anything, any cell that you see that is highlighted in red is an area that Stanley County schools scored higher than that district for that measure. In a quick glance, you will see that under the districts or LEAs of Cabarrus, Davidson, Charlotte Mecklenburg, and Union County, we did not best those in very few categories. However, since we are talking about testing data, I have just a few points also in consideration. If you look at those four districts compared, and the numbers I'm going to give you, you can look at this several different ways, but since I'm over testing, the numbers I'm going to give you is the number of EOG and EOC tests given by those districts for the 2016-17 school year. First of all, Stanley County administered 11,210 EOG and EOC tests. Charlotte Mecklenburg administered almost 194,000. Union County, 56,781. Cabarrus County, 44,195. And Davidson County, 25,782. So those four districts considerably larger than us, giving at least double the amount of tests that we were given. Now, if you look at the districts that we bested, again, we fall kind of in the middle of the pack with 11,210 tests given last year. Rowan Salisbury gave more than double us at 25,956. Richmond County, 9,745. Kannapla City, slightly over 7,000. Montgomery County, 5,250. And Anson County, 4,271. So it's pretty obvious there, we have two different classes of school systems. You have the larger, which have more resources, and then you have those smaller, typically more rural school settings. Another point of interest is percent of those tests that were taken by students identified as economically disadvantaged. Again, it's pretty clearly clear. Those four districts that bested us, Union County, 32% of their tests were taken by students identified as economically disadvantaged. Cabarrus County, 39.3%. Charlotte Mecklenburg, 45.1. And Davidson County Schools, 45.5%. The percentage of students in Stanley County that took those 11,000 tests that was identified as economically disadvantaged, 50.2%. So clearly, we had more economically disadvantaged students tested, or more tests taken percentage-wise than those districts that did better than us. Now, of course, those districts that we bested, again, their percentages range anywhere from 49.1% to 76% of their tests taken by EDS students. That was very quick and in a nutshell, just the highlights, but any questions?
Just, just a point of, just to make a point.
Just, just a point of, uh, just to make a point, uh, you were comparing our scores to the state's scores. Obviously, that's the state average.
State average, yes, sir.
Which means we have some that's quite a bit better than we are, and we have quite a few that's not quite where we're at, so.
Yes, sir.
Could be worse, but we got something to work toward, but.
Yes.
Appreciate all your hard work and power and all this. Could you do these slides on a hard copy for us?
Yes, sir. I believe they were provided in a smaller format, but if you'd like them or a little bit larger and can see them a little bit clearer, I'll be glad to present those as well.
These will.
Yeah, you can't really read it, but we're trying to save paper, so, but I'll be glad.
You would, at least enough copies for the board.
And I welcome anyone that'd like to come and meet and drill down a little bit further. I'd be glad to have you.
Any other board members have any question, Mr. Hatley, or any comments you want to make?
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, board member, last night, the board had the opportunity to hear school improvement plans and safety plans from each of the twenty-one schools. I would ask, this item needs action to the board to, if they would, at this time, to approve both the school improvement plans and the safety plans.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the request from Mr. Poplin.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of both.
Motion by Mr. Swearingen, second by Mr. McIntyre to approve the school improvement plans, including a safety plan. Any discussion from anyone? Hear none of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Poplin.
Thank you. Also, moving down curriculum instruction update, I have just a couple of things I'd like to let everyone know. We do have a process, I've talked and shared with the Curriculum Instruction Committee earlier, that we do curriculum and instruction audits where we go out into the schools and make visits. We are in the process of visiting each school and going through a formal process that we come in, of course, we continue to go out to schools and walk through classrooms to ensure all the programs that we're implementing, see if they need support, et cetera. One thing that we could look at the scores early, the data, and we saw good increases in reading and some of, again, our math that's going up, we attribute a lot of that to the MDC and LDC, is Math and Literacy Design Collaborative, and just point of information for the board that we are completing year two of that, and we actually complete year two training of teachers, this will be in December. And the goal when that was set forth was fifty percent of the teachers would be trained in those two modules. Basically, we will start very soon with year three implementation of MDC and LDC, and that would ensure, the, the goal was for a hundred percent of all of our teachers to be on board. It was a very big task, and it was set forth not as to do it all in one time, but to slowly bring on the teachers as train-to-trainer module. So just want to kind of let the board be aware. Also, just again, a point of information is that we have two visiting principals from China that will visit Stanley County Schools. They're in partnership with a program from UNC Greensboro, it's an international program. They're from rural schools in China, and there's eight actually that's coming into UNCG, and two of those will spend two days in Stanley County going from school to school to learn more about us, and of course, we have the opportunity to learn a lot from them, so we're very excited. And I will share with the board those dates and times and attentive schedule where they would be. I would like at this time to turn it over to Mr. Sean Britt, who's going to share the Chromebook project update. Thank you, Mr. Britt.
Thank you, Mr. Poplin, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to take a brief moment to update you on our Chromebook project and a few other things. This year, we delivered twenty-five hundred new Chromebooks to our high school students, and I'll just give you kind of comparison, we're in our fifth year of this one-to-one project. And I remember the first year that we did this was my second year as a principal at South, and I think it was August of that year, I remember them delivering to our school the devices that we would hand out to students. But since we were one of the first districts, even in the state, to utilize Chromebooks as one-to-one, it was a fairly new process of trying to work through that, and I think we gave those out in February that year, just to, to kind of work out everything that had to be done in order for that to happen, policies and, and other equipment that had to go into support it. By comparison, I think we had decided the first of August, working with you, the board on the purchase for the high school Chromebooks, and they were delivered to each student the first week of school. Just tells you how much has changed, and I owe a lot of credit to a great many people, starting with the board and the staff at each school and at the central office, starting with finance, who began the process of the funding part, our vendor, I remember getting the call, I think it was a Friday, the teachers had come back and said, "We're going to drop off twenty-five hundred Chromebooks, where would you like them?" I was hoping they'd deliver them to the school, but that wasn't the case. They came in eight big pallets, they dropped them off, and there was a smart guy who decided, "Well, just wheel them down a hill," not thinking I had to wheel them back up a hill at some point, and that's when I called Mr. Poplin, because he has all the answers. And we came over one day, and he looked at it and said, um, he had a plan, and he got Mr. Bowers on the phone, just to give you an idea of how we all kind of work together. Maintenance came over with their Bobcat, we loaded them up one morning, we went out in our truck with Mr. Poplin driving, and by noon, we had delivered all the devices to the schools. And would have been done about two or three o'clock, but we were loading the Bobcat back up, and, um, well, the trailer popped up, and they kind of looked around, somebody forgot to put the pin back in, and I happened to reach in my pocket and had the pin, so that took us about an hour to fix that, but, um, you know, I, I just tell that story because it, it was one of the better days we've had in a long time in my, in, in technology, just seeing everybody from teachers and students and, and staff work together to make sure that by the first week of school, those students have those devices. So that being said, we put a lot of focus on these student devices over the years, and I think that's been a great commitment, I hope we continue that. One thing we, I would like to work with our leaders in the district is looking at teacher devices and their equipment. We've need to, we refurbished high school devices this year for teachers, but we will ultimately need to replace some of those. And particularly, projection systems and stuff, we've had many of those in place for about eight years, and they're, and it's probably at a time where they're reaching their end-of-life cycle. So I like the commitment we have on our student devices, we like to put the commitment also on the teacher side of coming up in the coming year, just to kind of put that on, on the radar. And lastly, one of the big things that will require board action this year is that we are in the final year of our wide-area network to our schools. That is a contract that we have to enter into at some point in the year that will require board action. Right now, working with our E-Rate consultant, we have begun the process bidding, and that, that's a pretty long five- to six-month process, but I'll keep you up to date on how that plays out, but I just wanted to put that on your radar as well. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Before you go, this was brought to my attention, and I don't know if it was, um, how the deal was struck, or it was a money thing, or what the deal was. Question was posed about, I think we've had protective cases for some of these devices, and this year, we didn't get those.
Yeah.
Is that something we need to look at?
Well, the devices that we got now, it tells you how much the Chromebook project has changed a lot. In the early, the first project, we had to take care of all repairs and incur the cost. Right now, as you buy devices, you buy warranties with them, and so those devices are covered under a warranty, so, not that we want a lot of them to break, but, you know, with what we pay in warranty, what would offset the cost of any bags or cases, but we have some that we've kept, and if any student wanted one, we've given some to the high school students.
Apparently, apparently, they feel confident in their equipment if they're willing to warrant it without that, then.
Yeah, but the, the vendor we bought from warranted all the, the, the high school devices that we got, so.
Thank you. Anybody else here have any questions?
Thank you.
And I, I vouch for you, I caught you guys out in delivering that stuff, I think. Ms. Calvert's not here, so Ms. Harvey, you got personnel?
Yes, sir. You've been presented with the personnel agenda. Section one is for information only.
Move approval, section two.
Move, motion to approve section two, do we have a second? Second. Motion was by Mr. Swearingen, second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion or questions? Hear none of those in favor of section two, signify by saying aye. Those know. It's approved. You have anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay, auxiliary services, Ms. Hatley.
Good evening, I just have two items this evening. The first, in your board packets, you have a copy of two change orders that we approved. One was for permits. We budgeted four thousand for permits, and the actual cost of the permits were eight thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars, so we had to do a change order for the increase in permit cost. The second change order was to replace the can lighting that was proposed for outside with floodlights, and that was for a total of one thousand sixty-eight dollars.
I'm assuming you won't narrow okay on that?
These do not require approval by the board, we're just required to present. Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming, again, assuming's a dangerous thing, but I'm, I'm assuming that this is probably going to be the end of the.
I asked, and they said these should be the last.
Okay, good deal.
The second item that I have is really just a, a heads-up for the board to let you know that at the end of the second month of school, after forty days of school, DPI develops a report called the Best One of Two, and it's a calculation of our ADM comparing the first month to the second month of school, and they look at each grade level to determine which month had the highest ADM in that grade level, and they develop a total ADM the best of those two months. When that report comes out, if our allotted ADM, um, excuse me, if our best one of two ADM is higher or lower than our allotted ADM, then we will see an increase or a decrease in allotment funds. Because the end of the second month occurs on October the twenty-third, and by the time the report gets to the state and DPI has their best one-of-two report, it would be right at our next board meeting or even after. So I didn't want to wait until that time when the report comes out to give you this news. Again, it's not official until the, till DPI does their reporting. However, if we look at the ten-day ADM count, it was eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine. Our allotted ADM was eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five. So right now, we're looking at a hundred and sixty cent, a hundred and sixty-six student In order to have an increase or a decrease in our allotted funds, the decrease or the increase would have to be at least two percent or one hundred students of that allotted ADM. So with our one hundred and sixty-six deficit, we would meet definitely the, the one hundred student requirement and almost the two percent requirement. If our membership numbers do not improve through the course of the first month and the second month, and we do not get below that one hundred student deficit, we will see a decrease in our allotted funds. The decreases are made in the classroom teacher, instructional support, non-instructional support, teacher assistant, classroom materials and supplies, textbook, and career technical education program support categories as applicable. So it's not all of our program funds, but it is some of our most important. Again, this will not be official until the end of the second month, or we're not expecting a report till sometime in November, it may even be early December. But again, I didn't want to wait until it was upon us and already official before letting you know. Again, there is some hope for improvement. This ten-day count, those first ten days of school, students are moving rapidly, lots of transition, so that ten-day count is not as accurate as the first month count, and of course, the second month count, so we're keeping our fingers crossed that we can make up some differences there.
So this is the bad news before the bad news, right?
This is the bad news. Before the official bad news, yes.
Anything else you have?
No, sir, that's it.
Anyone have any questions with Ms. Hatley?
Do we know how many of our students left to go to Greystone?
I do not have that count before me. I believe it was somewhere over a hundred students. We have the combination of our typical transition of those ninth graders that may go to Greystone, but then we also couple that with the middle school students that we lost this year.
That's what I'm really referring to.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come back when you have good news. Public comments, and we had one signed up, but I think that one, due to the subject, will be meeting with us in closed session. Superintendent's comments, Ms. Harvey?
No comments.
Mr. McIntyre, you want to lead off tonight?
I just want to say thank you to, for everyone that came out tonight and presented with us, and also a special congratulations to West Stanley Middle and Stanley Early College, and thank you to the administrators and the teachers for all your hard work.
Just echo the congratulations, congratulations to the schools on, on their grade improvements, and congratulations to Levi Carpenter, Karen Mann, if she's still here, and also to the board for participating in, in training last year.
Ms. Watson?
Also, I'd like to extend the congratulations to everyone, and thank you for all that you do for our young people. Thank you.
I extend my congratulations to the schools that we honored tonight. It was a pleasure to actually sit and talk with some of the leaders from, I believe, seven different schools. I was able to listen to the school improvement plans and some faculty last night, and that was eye-opening, and I was very impressed just to see how everyone was digging deeply into the data and have, we all have strategic plans in getting to those goals. It's not just a, a goal on the wall, but there's actually a plan to get there, and I have full confidence that we will. I'm very proud of the school system. Congratulations specifically to Levi Carpenter, I went over and shook his hand, because he may one day be all of our bosses, it sounds like, and I'm most interested in this impact mentoring. I was very excited to hear these two young ladies and their passion. This is my passion as well, and so I look forward to calling them and, and talking in a larger circle about what we can do.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all of those that were recognized earlier this evening. Big congratulations to all of you, and as Ms. Crump said, we had the privilege of sitting in last night with some educators, principals of the schools, and very impressed with some of the ideas and the plans. Some of them were very eye-opening in a not-so-positive way, that has really stuck with me, I've been thinking about it all day.
I've been thinking about it all day. But I'm just, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that with you all last night. Thank you.
I also am very impressed with the, um, impact mentoring program. Um, and, again, I really applaud Tamisha and others, especially, um, those working on this at Albemarle Middle School. Um, I think it's wonderful. Um, congratulations to, um, the program always with, um, South Stanley High School Robotics, with Mr. Sorensen, Levi Carpenter, um, sounds like Mr. Britt, if you ever need his assistance, he's the one to call, instead of someone at the State Department. That's great. To Stanley Early College and West Stanley Middle, um, hats off to you. Excellent, just wonderful. Um, Karen Mann, congratulation. I've known Karen, I used to teach with Karen a long, long, long time ago, but she's always been an advocate for EC students, um, and she's never changed, so I applaud her. And then I, I realized that this month of October is National Principals Month, so I know sometimes that you might not receive the recognition it seems like that you deserve, but, um, all of you who are always here, thank you, and found a little statement, "The key to student success is a great school, and the key to a great school is a great principal." And we sure do have them here, so thank you very, very much for all that you do.
Ditto all the, uh, compliments that were paid. Uh, I think one of the things that stood out to me last night, and, and if these administrators coming in presenting their plans, I may have just been putting on act and pulling my leg, but, but they seem to be full of enthusiasm, and I really do appreciate that. And enthusiasm is about half the battle in this, this, this thing you're doing, uh, working with the public and educating children, and I thank you so much for all your dedication. Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Harvey for taking over the reins, uh, and I'd like to thank everyone, uh, on the staff and out in the system for working with her, uh, and helping, helping keep moving the train down the tracks, so to speak. Uh, I met one of the young, uh, staff members from the Early Community College, and, uh, he said, "You don't recognize me, do you?" And, uh, I'm getting a little thin up here, been a few years, uh, and no, I didn't recognize the guy, but he was a young man that my wife taught years ago at, uh, at Oakboro, and I, and I just make that comment to say that you do make an impact on people, and you do have a tremendous influence on people, much more than you ever realize. And I think back, on a personal note, uh, my teachers in high school had a tremendous impact on me. My football coach had a tremendous impact on me, and, uh, in a lot of ways, uh, and I told my, my son's track coach in high school, you know, he had a relationship with my son that I didn't have with my son. So, you, you do have a tremendous impact on children, and I hope you'll keep that in front of you, and that's your vision, uh, that you keep making a strong impact on, on young lives. And, uh, just one final note, um, I, I know all of us have been galvanized by what we've seen come out of Las Vegas, and, uh, I really feel in my heart for, for the young people who have been growing up in the world that some of us older generation has created. But, uh, just keep, and I appreciate Mr. McIntyre bringing that up in his invocation, but, uh, keep those folks in your prayers, and also, uh, uh, the islands in the Caribbean, I, I can't imagine, uh, I was, I was in the Philippines when a typhoon hit, uh, Manila back in the seventies, and it was devastating what it did, and, uh, well, islands, you know, they catch the full brunt of the hurricanes, and, uh, uh, I can't imagine the devastation, but life's got to go on. You've got Puerto Rico with ninety-five percent of the people without power, can you imagine trying to go to school tomorrow? Your technologies don't work without power. Uh, you know, the bu, and, and the bus doesn't run because the roads are full of trees, it's just mind-boggling what they're going through, but, uh, just implore you to keep them in your prayers, 'cause there's a lot of hurt going on in the world. Next, uh, and if there's no objection, uh, and I'm, Mr. McIntyre's going to be having a, uh, policy meeting pretty soon, and, uh, one of the things that he'll be looking at is, uh, the policy regarding where we meet at, and, and, and that's, that's generally here, uh, but, uh, I'd like for the board to start at least, you know, and somebody else is chairing after December, they can pursue this any way they want to, but I'd like for us, uh, to at least once a quarter, have a meeting out in some schools around. And that being said, uh, I'd like for our, uh, November meeting to be held in Richfield, Ms. Harvey, and you can, uh, make them aware of that, and, uh, we will progress around the county. I think it's, it's very good for board members to get out and see what's actually going on, and it gives you a good chance to see the condition of some of the schools and, help us in making decisions as far as facilities are concerned. That will be, uh, seven o'clock on the seventh of November at Richfield. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session under Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 111 A6, and Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 111 A1, and Attorney Client Matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 111 A3.
Move that we go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second? All those in favor, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Reconvened in closed session. Call the open session back to order. Uh, Ms. Gibson, we'll recognize you for a motion.
Yes, I would like to move that, um, the board ask, um, Ms. Georgia Harvey to post the vacant superintendent position, um, immediately, and that that be posted for a period of sixty days or until filled.
Motion by Ms. Gibson is to direct the superintendent to post the, uh, position, uh, for superintendent Stanley County Schools, uh, immediately, for a period of sixty days or until filled. That the gist of your motion. Everyone understand the motion? Do we have a second? Second, Ms. Crump. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Mr. McIntyre. Second by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and get up and leave.